You don't have to worry anymore.
Exactly. All right.
Oh, well.
Be all right?
Yes. Ay, ay, ay.
Okay. All right. The light is on. It is four o'clock on February 27th, 2024, and we will call the Kerrville City Council Workshop to Order on a very, very warm February afternoon. Are there any public speakers?
Yes, ma'am, we have three. Michael Burkett.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was planning on addressing you on the transportation. I didn't know what number to put down.
Okay, would you like to wait until then?
Yes, please.
Okay, that'll be fine. Pardon?
During the workshop, we normally have the speakers speak in the very first.
Oh, at the very, very first?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All right, do you mind, Michael?
No, I'll do this. I was at the Commissioners' Court yesterday when Sean Scott talked to them about this same project that he's going to present to you. And the main thing I wanted y'all to know is that KerrConnect, which I guess all of you know that I'm the Chair of KerrConnect, we're prepared to work with Sean. We might be giving him input on projects that he's interested in. We might be able to pick up some of those projects. And so it's, we're ready to collaborate along with the city and the county, and maybe we can pull in another organization or two. But Sean won't be doing it by himself.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you guys do for our community. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Next.
Barbara Dill Ferguson. Well, Council Mayor Barbara Dill Ferguson here in Kerrville. I've signed up regarding to see that ordinance that you'll be looking at. And as I mentioned earlier in the previous City Council meeting when this ordinance came up, this is the first time that Kerrville City Council will be looking at an ordinance to regulate political free speech and religious free speech. That is a huge change in the ordinance. This is not just a rewrite of an old ordinance. It's introducing an entire new scope to our government. And one of the things I also wanted to question is if it wouldn't be appropriate, given that three of the council members are currently in a campaign, that this is not a very good time in the eyes of the public to be reviewing this ordinance. I think I would recommend, and a lot of people have asked me about this, why are they doing this now? And then they proceed to tell me why they think you're doing it now. Now, that's just what I'm hearing out there, and I'm sure you're not immune to the fact that that is a concern. So I'd recommend that you table this until after the election, or the three of you excuse yourselves, but then you don't have a quorum on the issue. So, and finally, there is the, aside from the real litigious nature that this could spark, there is the issue of the conflict between Section 3181 and 3184. It is very unclear what a canvasser should do. In one aspect, they say a canvasser does not have to get a permit. And then in another, it says only permit holders have to use the do not knock list. Then it says a canvasser will be in violation of the ordinance if they do knock on a door from the do not knock list. So there's a real problem there that at the very minimum would have to be redone. But again, I'd like to see the council table this until after the election. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Hammerlin.
Good afternoon. My name's George Hammerlin. I was going to talk on the same item, 2C. I was just, wanted to encourage you to consider some of the concerns that some people may have going into this somewhat blind. I agree on my part, but anything that kind of limits the ability of political free speech, and especially to interact with people at the polling location in regard to electioneering. I think the poorer the campaign is, the less funded it is, that's one of the few ways they have to get their message out. And if someone's a wealthy incumbent, and then to limit someone's ability to electioneer at the polling place, which has been going on for hundreds of years in this country, I think is detrimental to the easy, uniform and equal access, you know, to the polls. So anyway, that's it. I just think there's a large, a large room to consider when you start limiting free speech and access. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
Thank you very much. All right, we will go to 2A, and we have with us Sean Scott from ACOG. So welcome, Sean, and we're anxious to hear what you've got to say to us.
Well, first, thank you very much. Good afternoon, and it is warm, kind of warm in here still. But my name is Sean Scott. I am the Senior Director over Transportation and Public Safety for the Alamo Area Council of Governments. Our home offices are in San Antonio, but we take care of the surrounding 12 counties around Bear County. I was recently presented with a great opportunity to increase public transportation in our area. I informed our board of this, of what was going on, and almost every county came up to me and asked me, you know, hey, is there ways to improve our service in our areas? And that included Mayor Eichner and Judge Kelly here out of Kerr, in Kerrville. We looked at what they proposed to us, or actually what they asked us to look into, and it came up that it was, that this was the prime place to actually try to invest our money into expanding public transportation. This was a great area to get a really big impact in a short amount of time. So that's really what we're doing here. Not sure if that's working or not. The button's not working. There we go. I want to start off and just talk a little bit about what our is, and if you're not familiar with Alamo Regional Transit right now, we've actually been here in Kerrville since easily the mid-'80s. That's probably when it became Alamo Regional Transit, before most rural transportations were targeted inside senior centers and stuff like that. You saw the white bus with blue stripe. And it evolved out, and eventually the federal government got involved and created rural public transportation, and that funding became us. And so that happened in the '80s. We have a facility over here, over here on Shiner Street across from Buzzzy's Barbecue. We have the Greyhound bus that still goes through right now. It's a pretty limited service. I think they come two buses a day through there right now. At one point, they've been up to over 14 buses a day, but right now everything's backed off. So we've been here and everything. Last year, we did over 9,600 trips in Kerr County. Most of those trips are right here in Kerrville. So we do a lot of transportation services for the area. But while we did those 9,600 trips, I will tell you that we probably turned down twice that many trips. I mean, the demand is way more than we can ever meet with the resources that we have right now. And so just like most things in life, you can't stay still. You either got to get better, or you get worse. You move forward, or you move backwards. And so for us to move forward, we're going to have to bring in many, many more resources to meet the needs here. And to do that, it's going to take funding to support you. So that brings me to what our current opportunity is that I did want to talk to you about. So I will tell you, I've been in public transportation for over 20 years. First time in my life that I've ever seen the federal government or the state government come through with money for operations. Operations is a long-term commitment. It's not something you could just give me this year and not next year, because we're going to commit to a service and operations. Usually, they want to give you some capital money to buy a bus or something like that. This was a real game changer right here. The strings attached on this always from the federal or state level is that it does require a local match of funds, and it requires a 50-50 match. Currently, Tech Dot has offered me a little over $400,000 annually for a long term. It's my responsibility to try to come up with the match. And so with that, we're trying to bring that service into here, and we need to work on a partnership between probably ACOG, the city of Kerrville, and Kerr County. The partnership that ACOG brings to us is the resources we already have in the capital equipment, the technology, and that. What we're looking for from the city and the county are the matching funds to implement a very robust public transportation service. I just wanted to talk real quick and get the important stuff out of the way of what the opportunity is, how it came about, and all that. But I do want to mention two really important things about what public transportation does to help you get the context in your mind. And so whenever I think about public transportation, there's two main benefits that I really try to focus on. One of them is economic growth, and the other one is community health. Very broad topics, and so I'll try to narrow it down from my public, from my public transportation perspective here. There we go. So transportation's not all just taken. We're not just taking. We give back a lot through different ways. And so what I mean by that is for every dollar that's invested in public transportation, you're looking at between $3 and $4 returned into the community. That's returned in usually because businesses start building around reliable and dependable routes and services. You'll see that a coffee shop comes in on here, and then a sandwich shop builds around that, and they start clustering up around services. You'll find businesses want to move closer to established in public transportation that does exist. And that happens in small communities, that happens in large communities. Transit also connects workers to jobs, students to school. So would you want to get that skilled workforce together? You start looking at the demographics of who the students are now, and you start seeing, I mean, I'll tell you, when I was 16, I wanted a driver's license, and I wanted a car that day. The younger generation right now, they find ways to get around. They use different modes of public transportation. So they don't get driver's licenses until 20, 21 years old. And so bringing in a really robust public transportation system actually helps promote that kind of skilled workforce into our area, or into this area. The last thing I talked about on economic growth is job creation. So not only coming in with the transit system like I'm talking about, we're going to hire drivers, we're going to hire local workers, we're going to have all the buses serviced here locally. So those are all ways that that helps add into the local economy right there. And so we've always been told the one way to expand the workforce and improve any area's economy is by giving more people the ability to get to their job. And public transportation really gives them those opportunities. And I'll expand on that just a little bit more, but I wanted to talk real quick about how it helps your community health, because this is always important, and it comes up to almost every elected official, it comes up to us all the time. I work with Area Agency on Aging, and so accessibility and availability, accessibility and availability, there we go, of transit services to what I call vulnerable populations. Age, you know, your aging population, your mobility impaired population. Mobility is a prerequisite for people to live independently. And so public transportation helps these people live independently, because we help them avoid the social isolation, the depression, loneliness, all these things that impact their wellness and their well-being. And so those are, those are the big things that I like to talk about, is the economic growth and the community health. There we go. I was going. And so next steps, I tried to open this up for conversation a little bit. So my next steps while I'm here is I'm looking for support from the council and from the Commissioners' Court on this project, and then a commitment that you do want us to move forward with this. This is something that's in y'all's interest. I could tell you that we are looking at getting the first stage of implementation done by fall of 2024 for the 2025 year. So that's a big thing. Our next steps for us is if we could get the commitments and support from y'all, we'll start having discussions with the elected officials on both sides to get visions and some ideas of what's going on, what you would like to see, what you think areas we need to focus on. We will then have focus groups happening. We'll bring in community leaders such as Mr. Burkett that just talked, and then local consumers of the services that already happen. When we get all that going, then we'll come back to you with service recommendations. So service options that we want to talk to, and so like I told you, I wanted to give you room to talk and ask questions now, but I wanted to talk about things that we do or we can do, so then maybe it opens up a little bit of a two-way communication. So when we come into a community, we try to bring, come in with a multi-tiered approach. And most of our multi-tier approaches start with a basic fixed route, flexed route system. And I'll talk a little bit more detailed about what that is. But the next deal is we bring, we look at other service modes to fill in those gaps that are presented by that. And so what I mean by service options are flexed route coverage. It's very similar to a fixed route. I'll talk much more extensively in the next slide. Demand response is currently what we do. We have advanced reservations. We will come out and pick you up, but first come, first served. So obviously, capacity is limited, and we fill up pretty fast. We have microservice availability. I will tell you that this is a little bit new to us. We do work it right now, and it's working effectively. We could come in with, microservice is probably more commonly known to most people as like Uber and Lyft and stuff like that. We can do same-day transit. We can, you know, depending, everything costs, obviously, and so if you want 20-minute service, we can do that. And so that's, that exists. Inner-city bus service, so let's just say that we're trying to bring in more workforce. We could tie a bus service that goes all the way down into Burnie, or we can go to Junction or wherever we have to go with this. But those are the different service modes that we can provide. The recommendations that we make with, and I started this already, is I like to start with a good basis, and that basis is going to be a flexed route service. What I mean by flexed route service is when you talk about a fixed route, fixed route's the same route that the bus takes on the same time, and it never varies off of it. Flexed route has those time points, same route, same time points, except for, let's just say you have a mobility impaired person or somebody that needs special assistance, they can ask for that bus to deviate off that route and pick them up along a corridor that we'll establish. So similar to it, but it gives us much, much more variances to what we can do. Lets us play with some ideas and stuff. We could also use a ride-hailing app to just, if a person goes, oh, I know that bus is coming by here in 20 minutes, they can get on the app and they can get it to done. They don't just have to call in. So I'll talk a little bit more about the app here in just a second. I do want to say that we already have established in certain regions that we provide this route service, this flexed route service that we do. One of them is in Seguin, Texas. We got Connect Seguin. And then we have in Atascosa, Connect Cowboy Connect, which connects Jurgenton and Potteet, and Jurgenton Pleasanton and Potteet. Something interesting I just wanted to show you is the history of ridership on this. Connect Seguin is our more mature route, and you could see that with one bus over one year time, last year, we did over 21,000 trips. You saw that we did 9,600 trips in this area. We probably used five to six buses to do that. So one bus did 21,000 trips right there in Seguin. Cowboy Connect, you could see that we had this great planning project started, and we got hit by a little virus, and so it didn't look very pretty in 2020. But you could see it's really kicked off. We did over 12,000 trips. As it matures, you start seeing that happen. You've already seen in Seguin and Pleasanton where you see businesses already migrating onto our route system that we do, that they're adding those little clusters of businesses that I talked about. In addition to providing this kind of route service, this is where we start augmenting with the other services. And so the other services are usually much more expensive to run, and so we try to limit their service to get everybody we can on this, but it doesn't fit everybody. So we will continue with the demand response system that's already here, and then we'll add in the microtransit and see where that works, because that's going to target a whole different population, I believe, because we're going to treat it as more of a premium service. Transitioning to that is what do I bring when I come up to the table? I talked to you a little bit about I'm going to bring you the buses and that. We already have the resources over there. We have a facility, and the facility will be at your disposal also if y'all come up with ideas that you would like to use it for. Things that come to mind in the past is warming stations or some kind of emergency management situation. There's all kinds of things that it could be used for. It's not huge, but it is open to the public or will be when we get it going. We're going to hire local operations staff to do this, and we will have remote backup staff. So our system is totally redundant. We can be anywhere in the world as long as we have an internet connection. We can communicate with our buses, we could communicate with our staff, and people could call us. So anywhere we're at, we've got that deal. So if we have any kind of issues, if we have somebody come down sick with the flu or something like that, we can rotate people in relatively easy, just because we're already operating here, Bandera, Burnie, San Antonio. And so we would just shift drivers up if someone were to get sick or something like that, or the other. The big thing for us is our app. So we do have an app-based system. We are strengthening it greatly. I was just on a meeting with them this morning. The app, you will be able, right now, you could do advanced schedule reservation, you can see where your bus is, if any of you have ever used the Uber app. It's got very many of those similar characteristics. And then also, the app will tie you to Uber. So it's called X4MOS platform. And so what we end up looking at, and I'll give you an example of how it would work, is if we had a route system here, and our demand response system here, we had a route system that takes you to Bandera, and maybe a microtransit in Bandera, you would be able to use the same app to transition your ridership the whole way with a trip planning thing that I also provide on there. So you, all you would do is put your address, where you're at, and where you want to go. The app will sit there and go, well, you need to walk two blocks over here to get on this bus, which will take you to here to get on that, and then you need to hit the button for Uber, and it'll, and you'll be able to pay through that the whole way. So that technology's already there. We're bringing that. We're also going to bring in marketing, travel training, to make sure that people are comfortable with the routing, and that's always an ongoing situation. It'll happen almost daily. I told you, we'll bring in the vehicles, and we'll provide the maintenance and all that. We try to locally source everything that we can, excuse me. And then the last thing I really talk about is ridership and reports to you. You can get those monthly, you can get them as detailed as you want. I usually start out with a canned report to you, but like I said, I collect almost every bit of data you can imagine, latitudes, longitudes, purpose, trip purpose. It's all pretty anonymous, but using all that data, if you wanted to know what precinct your ridership was coming from or anything like that, we can, we can do that. And so with that, I do thank you for your time. And again, the purpose of this was really to get, to gauge your interest in this and to see if you want me to move forward. Yesterday, I was asked if we would create a survey for local employers to kind of gauge their interest on who would use the stuff like that. And so that's what I'm doing here also, is to find out what y'all would like me to do.
What do you charge people to ride your bus?
Depending on the service. So when you look at the Connect Seguin route and the Cowboy Connect route, I charge nothing on the route system itself. Now, when you go to the demand response system, if you're in town, it's a $2 one-way trip. And if you cross outside, if you stay within the county, it's, I believe it's $4. If you cross the county line, it goes to $6. Cross the county line, it goes to $8. If you cross two county lines, it goes to 12. And I will tell you, cross the two county lines is difficult, because this bus is usually too full to do that.
Other questions, council?
So I'm curious, then how do you primarily make your revenue?
Our revenue is grant-funded.
Okay.
And now, we do have some contracts, I will tell you that. We're able to do some ancillary use if we have vehicles that aren't used at a certain time or something like that. So we do have contracts to provide Medicaid transportation, and we have contracts with Aging to provide nutrition and medical transportation, to everything non-emergency medical transportation.
I think it's a great service that y'all provide, and that y'all would potentially be able to provide to our citizens. I've heard from a lot of people wanting something like this, especially in the older population, for those who are no longer able to drive themselves. My question is gauging our support, what exactly would you need from the city? Is there any type of monetary contribution you'd want, any type of use of our facilities for anything that you're going to be doing? High-level highlights on that, if anything?
Okay. Really, yes, I'm looking for a monetary contribution. That's why I showed you that we have 400,000 available in the federal funds, and that's what I would like to get, an $800,000. Actually, it's going to be closer to a million-dollar project here, but I'm only going to need $400,000 of match. And this is a long-term commitment. I'm not asking for a one-year thing. This is going to be ongoing, long-term, and it'll stay that same. I've got the commitment from the state that they are going to fund this long-term. It's going to be part of my formula funding that I receive annually, and so I need the match to come up with it. And so looking to you and the county to partner up to provide the other part of that.
Yeah, your slide said 50%.
Misleading the way it reads. It's a 50-50 match. So if I want to pull down a dollar, I got to have a dollar.
Okay, and have you talked with the county already?
Yes, ma'am. Met with them yesterday morning.
And how receptive have they been?
They're the ones that instructed me to begin the surveys, and they were very receptive. They're wanting me to provide a little more information to them, which totally expected that, but you know, I just wanted to make sure this was, this was an area that everybody wants to be involved in, that they support, if we're not.
Okay, so you're looking for 200,000 from the city and 200,000 from the county. And what happens if one gives and the other doesn't? Do you have other resources that you can go to for that match?
So we would probably, we would tailor down the service to a $400,000 service. I mean, we would still use the 200,000 of federal that anybody, that we can provide the match for.
That match is annual?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to service Ingram?
I, yeah, that is the plan right now. Mountain Home in Ingram and Comfort and Center Point. Create a route system, because we're going to try to bring in for the, those are going to be employment routes, is kind of the intent right now. We haven't, we haven't established it very well. I haven't looked at all the demographics that we need, trying to gather input from the surveys.
Are you going to talk to the city of Ingram?
We will.
I know it's not Kerrville, it's not Kerr County, they don't have the resources, but if you're going to service them, then it should be presented to them and let them see what they think about it as well.
Okay.
I had a question as well. You showed Seguin, and you showed Cowboy Connect. What are the populations of those areas compared to Kerrville and Kerr County?
I believe that Seguin is 32,000, 33,000 population, and that's off the top of my head. I'll have to go back and check if I was wrong, but I think it's very, both of the communities are very similar to Kerrville's. Now, Seguin's a little more densely populated, and so the streets are a little more laid out in northeast, you know, northeast, south and west. Probably more comparison would be between Jurgenton and Pleasanton, where it's a little more distance that's going to have to be covered to provide that service.
And Sean, you had talked about ongoing. Would it be 10, 20 years that you would hope, do you have a number in mind?
For how long they want this to go? I hope.
Forever, as much as we could.
I hope I'm not around when it goes away.
Okay, okay.
That's my intent. I mean, I don't, I want to make a long-term commitment to you, make sure this works, and we're not kind of coming in here and trying to nickel and dime this. We're actually coming in with a robust plan that will work for the future, for the long range. And it'll start generating some money on its own. We would be able to come to y'all, y'all could, the city council here could sit there and go, we do want you to charge fares. We want you to charge a dollar or something. I mean, now, the fares can't be used in match, though, because of this program income, and it doesn't, it's just a whole lot.
And you said something about you would really need the money like this fall in order to start the program in 2025.
So I don't know how Tech Dot got the money out of the legislature, but they want the projects to start this fall.
This fall.
They want, so that was the amazing part, and I am trying to live up to their standards.
Okay.
So if you do charge, Sean, what do you do with the revenue that you make from that?
So fares, fares just come off the top. So whatever my expenses are, it reduces those expenses down, and then the rest is what's eligible for reimbursement. We work on a complete reimbursement program in transportation. So we incur the cost, pay the cost, and ask for reimbursement.
All right, council. What are your, any other questions, concerns? And how do you feel? Well, I can tell you that when I was out there ringing the bell for the Salvation Army over the Christmas holidays, I saw that bus at I saw that, that bus at least 50 times at Walmart. So I know that a lot of people are utilizing it. I do feel that there is a need here in our community uh, for people to have ulterior um, avenues for transportation. So, I mean, I would, I would definitely be in support of it.
Phil?
I'd be interested in seeing the results of that survey.
Okay.
And do you have kind of in your own mind a timeframe for that?
Um, we expect the survey to go out this Friday, so March 1st. I'm expecting some preliminary results to come back before the 15th. Because they're going to be, it's going to be an email and I'm working with the county. They have a, a, a person that, that, that can help us facilitate getting into these. And then economic development also is supposed to, is, is willing.
Okay, all right. Uh, Roman?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm interested in it. I'd be interested to see um, the results of that as well. Um, and if we could gauge the interest of any other municipality who's interested. And if we could kind of, you know, take lead as, as a city and with the county on that, trying to kind of joint partnership, I guess you could say, with all the other counties and, and cities. If we're going to extend beyond our county.
Okay.
And, and see with that. So we could at least share whatever percentage uh, it's going to cost rather than Kerrville citizens. You know, covering the cost for all the cities, surrounding cities. I'd be interested in seeing all that.
And, and I, and I could, I could envision that. I can envision the network going into Fredericksburg and, and down into Bernie and stuff like that. So I really do see that. And of course, we're already, Mr. Burkett already talked about, we already try to collaborate and use the resources that are here. Um, he just provides a much more detailed, different service than I can provide. It's still needed. All of it's needed.
Jeff?
I like it. It's uh, I do want to see the survey. Um, I think everybody up here would like to see. And uh, one of the reasons I asked about Ingram is because, you know, I'd like to see a little skin in the game from everybody that's going to be in this. I don't want to say, okay, well Ingram doesn't have the funds to support it, so we're not going to let you, you know, service Ingram because we have workers from Ingram that come to Kerrville.
Right.
But I would, I'd like to see a little bit of something from everybody.
And that's, and we did that similar in Atascosa County because Potite was same, same situation. If you're familiar with Potite, Potite. And so minimal contribution, but they do contribute.
Okay, I, I think that uh, it's a goal with the survey.
Okay.
And uh, that we would be willing to be supportive. And I agree with everything that's been said. I thank you, Sean, for uh, your ingenuity, your thinking outside the box here with this and, and uh, letting us be a, a part of this. So it's good.
Like I said, we're going to come to y'all with a whole bunch of different
Okay.
things and, and, and we will find out what service we do want.
All right.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Sean, you.
Mayor? If uh, if it serves the council, this news crew wanted to do video chief and the solar eclipse update and everything. Uh, if we wanted to, uh, it's up to the council, if they wanted to knock that out and get that done before we dive into roads and pavement stuff, uh, it's up to you. But that's, that's why this news crew is here.
That's why they're here. Okay. I was kind of wondering what the. Okay, all right. Anyone have any objection to that? Where are they from? Okay.
Yeah, this all happened in like five minutes while we're here.
I know, you're good.
All right, Chief, you ready?
Put some makeup on.
All right, so you can't tell, but uh, I'm Ashley Boyle today. I'm doing her portion of the presentation. So when uh, when I get into Parks and Rec stuff, I'll, I'll explain why I'm doing all of that. And uh, then Chief Maloney will lead us into uh, emergency management and I, I may jump in on a piece there as well. As you know, we're, uh, we're looking forward to our Monday, April 8th, 2024, uh, solar, total solar eclipse. Uh, once-in-a-lifetime experience, uh, last seen in the US in 2017. Uh, after the 2024 eclipse, interesting enough, uh, the next uh, eclipse, full solar eclipse will be in 2045. So uh, we're in a very unique position as a community. Uh, and as you know, you tasked us, uh, the council tasked us several years ago to begin preparation uh, for the uh, eclipse. And we've been doing so for uh, approximately four years, two years uh, very formally. The eclipse occur uh, on April 8th at 1:32 PM in the last four minutes and 25 seconds here in Kerrville. And uh, we're expecting a significant impact to our community, uh, two to three times the population increase. Uh, I know you've probably seen uh, estimations out there upwards of 488,000. Uh, we, we've been able to find no indication of that. We continue to follow uh, what previous studies, white papers and after-action reports we can find from other communities that have experienced uh, very similar events. Uh, one of the things we're very excited about is the city of Kerrville uh, is partnering with NASA to celebrate the 2024 solar eclipse. Uh, NASA will livestream from Louise Hayes Park, uh, similar to the 2023 eclipse. And Kerrville is the only Texas uh, community NASA has selected to uh, livestream from. Uh, the Kerrville Parks and Recreation Department worked with NASA to, to secure 10,000 eclipse glasses uh, free to be distributed to uh, every student in Kerrville Independent School District. The Kerrville Eclipse Festival uh, was the, was created as part of our committee and uh, is to provide an event for uh, area people to come and view and celebrate the eclipse. Uh, and we're also hoping to encourage some of our guests to uh, stay in the park with us uh, post-totality to, to help impact our traffic. Many of the uh, uh, after-action reports we reviewed really pointed towards traffic issues immediately following uh, the eclipse. Uh, so we're working uh, as much as we can to try to mitigate some of uh, some of those traffic issues. Uh, the Kerrville uh, Eclipse Festival uh, has multiple uh, offerings, uh, programming from uh, eclipse education workshops to scientific keynote speakers, uh, live music, kids crafts and education, uh, post-totality engagement. Uh, and NASA will continue its live broadcast as well as uh, food vendors. And uh, the best part of all of this is it's free, uh, free admission. We, we invite everybody to come down and join us and have a great time in the park. Uh, we've been working uh, on uh, event parking. Uh, Louise Hayes Park uh, will be closed to vehicular traffic uh, for safety and event logistics uh, leading up to the event. Uh, the closure will take place uh, several days in advance and uh, will stay in place post-event uh, for cleanup. Uh, paid off-site parking at Tybee High School will be available uh, starting today. It actually went on sale today and uh, they've already sold 148 of 243 available parking spots. Uh, so already seeing a uh, a huge response there in just a few hours. Uh, reservations must be made online in advance uh, through the city of Kerrville website. Uh, this is a park and shuttle location only, meaning you can park there and we will send a bus through to pick you up and bring you to Louise Hayes Park, uh, where you can enjoy the festivities there. Uh, you cannot stay in, and uh, view the eclipse from this location. Uh, and for more information, uh, as always, uh, we refer you to uh, KerrvilleTexas.gov/eclipsefestival and uh, has all the information that you need for, for the Kerrville Eclipse Festival uh, as well as parking. Uh, there will also be free parking, uh, that'll be available in our downtown parking garage. Uh, our library parking uh, has been designated as ADA parking. Uh, so we will utilize that area uh, for ADA to access the park uh, through the new ramp that was built uh, just behind that uh, leads right down into the event area.
And Chief, on the, and you may get to it, so I may be premature here. With the school parking lot, the, the money that will be charged for that, that will go back to the school, right?
Uh, I, I believe a portion of that will go back to the school and a portion will uh, be utilized to uh, help supplement the expenses of the, of the transportation. Yes, ma'am. Kerrville Sports Complex, this is being set up as a viewing location uh, where you can arrive and, and utilize the facilities to stay and watch uh, the, the eclipse. Uh, there's prepaid parking passes uh, that are available. Uh, you can get those online. Uh, there will not be uh, sales at the gates. You must pay in advance. Uh, it's $75 per vehicle. Uh, it looks like right now they're tracking at 279 of those sold out of 793 available spaces. Uh, it's uh, limited uh, parking spaces sold. Uh, they won't be taking in any uh, large vehicles such as buses or trucks with trailers or RVs. This will only be passenger vehicles uh, allowed in this area. Uh, shuttle service will not be provided uh, to Louise Hayes Park for the Kerrville Eclipse Festival. This is a park and stay location. Pass holders will have uh, access to the complex, uh, portable toilets as well as food vendors. Uh, so there will be some support amenities uh, in that location for uh, people visiting. Uh, as we've reminded in every presentation we do, eye safety is very important uh, to view the solar eclipse. Uh, without proper eye protection, uh, viewing a solar eclipse can cause significant damage to your eyes. Uh, and we uh, caution the public to be careful of counterfeits. Uh, you want to make sure the glasses meet ISO safety standards. Uh, we are currently selling glasses, the city of Kerrville, at the Parks and Recreation Department. If you are looking for those, uh, they still have those in stock. Uh, eclipse merchandise that's available for, available from Parks and Recreation, uh, as well as here at City Hall. Uh, eclipse glasses, posters, shirts, postcards and stickers. Uh, I believe the shirts and postcards are the only ones available here at City Hall, but anything else can be uh, picked up at the Parker Rec- Parks and Recreation Department, 2385 Bandera Highway. So, uh, a lot of exciting things going on, on, on that side. Now we'll uh, turn this portion over to Chief Maloney to begin our public safety, emergency management planning section.
All right, a little bit of this is a review, so I took out uh, some of the slides in regards to the meetings that we're having and the collaboration with the county and other stakeholders for this. So I'm going to go a little more, just talk specifically about some of the things that we've done. Um, I may not be able to drill down into everything at this time because we're not releasing everything to the public. So the populat- uh, the population increase, based on the data we saw, two to three times a population increase. There was a recent article out there and I'm sure y'all read that estimated 488,000. Um, it's based on no correlation or causation statistics based on the 2017. And why I say that's important is because some of the data that was out there was saying that approximately 500,000 people would leave San Antonio, come to Kerrville proper for the solar eclipse. However, the total eclipse, a lot of this experience is being in totality. That's it. Whether you're, uh, get to experience four minutes and 26 seconds or whether you're a minute and 30, being a part of the totality is the bucket list. That is the experience. This totality is 100 miles wide. It's uh, actually Jackson Keller and I-10. But 410 and I-10 to the other side of Junction. So that would mean a lot of people in San Antonio will be in the path of totality. And those on the southwest side or the southeast side can travel up to La Cantera and still be able to see it, Raymond Park, a lot of other opportunities. One, um, as opposed to coming in to move in that many vehicles this way, getting stuck in traffic and a lot of other components. So everything we see from the experts that we're talking about is two, three times a population. So we looked at after-action reports from the 2017, Nitrona County, Wyoming. Uh, they had some great information on data, things they saw on I-10 for traffic studies, things they saw impact to health and medical. Carmadel, Illinois, another great location looking like Kerrville with close proximity to the metroplex. Ohio, uh, uh, Idaho, community planning white paper, a lot of information on the FAQs. Oregon Emergency Management, Kentucky Emergency Management, uh, Asper Tracy Resources. That was all healthcare, the emergency preparedness. And then we looked at traffic impact articles and studies. So we did a lot of research. We did our due diligence to make sure that we're prepared for the total eclipse coming through Kerrville and Kerr County and understanding the impact it will have to our neighbors, our neighboring counties and mutual aid support. Community lifelines. So we took all that information and what we really want to do as emergency management is focus on what we've called the community lifelines. And I'm going to talk a little bit about those, each one of these in a second. So we look at safety, security, food, water, shelter, health and medical, energy, communications, to include public information, transportation and hazardous material. Remember, in any disaster response and anytime emergency management is working, whether it be a hurricane, whether it be flooding event, our goal is to establish, re-establish our community lifelines. This ensures the basic needs of our citizens, ensure government is operational and our businesses are back open. So it starts to right itself when it comes to emergencies. So emergency management planning phase, we looked at the seven. They're, uh, they are planned and built on each other. Each one of those involved a technical expert. So it was just not myself and Chief, you know, just kind of coming up with ideas. No, we brought the right people in the room. We brought Tech Dot in. We brought Kerr number one. Uh, we brought Tech's Department of Emergency Management in there. All the other local stakeholders, people that really understood their, their role and how they get impacted with those community lifelines. And we learned a lot too along the ways. A lot of those meetings when we were in, when we walked out of those, we were always like, wow. So that was a different aspect we really didn't see because that's not my realm of what I do each and every day. Um, they weren't roundtable discussions and right now we're about 98% complete on all those. So we're down to a little bit of a list that we're working through, kind of the one-offs, making sure we contact individuals, re-contact, uh, making sure that discussions we had months ago are still uh, current today, but that's where about we are. So we're really, really comfortable where we are in regards to our emergency management response for the total eclipse. So let's talk about each one individually. Um, first one to talk about is safety and security. Chief, did you want to?
Sure. One of uh, one of our primary concerns is uh, as we started looking at, at uh, previous eclipses were uh, the ability to move traffic and the impacts it had in these communities. Uh, so as we thought through that, one of our first concerns was the ability to move public safety personnel uh, through the city and county. So we have uh, worked hard to produce a plan uh, of how we will uh, ensure that we're able to uh, service both our citizens here in the city and in the chief's case, as well as the citizens for EMS services in the county. Uh, staging uh, of additional resources was part of that. Low, uh, identifying locations where, that we could utilize to uh, pre-stage some of our resources and have a, a quicker response either into the city or out of the city, uh, depending on the needs uh, of I-10 and our surrounding areas. Uh, we've identified mass gathering locations, uh, viewing sites, uh, worked to help create some shuttle sites and parking sites. Uh, all of these with the idea of having an understanding of traffic impacts post-event and how we can try to control uh, the traffic as it moves out of our city uh, back. Primarily, we're thinking towards San Antonio is where most of our visitors will be coming from, utilizing the I-10 corridor. Uh, so much of our plan is wrapped around that thought process and, and working to evacuate uh, people out of our community uh, as uh, as steadily and as organized as we can. Uh, we've identified uh, external resources and assets uh, that we've brought in to help us. Uh, Chief Maloney will discuss some of those, uh, as well as we're working to identify additional personnel resources that uh, that we will need to help support our operations uh, as we establish uh, our emergency operations center on Thursday. And we will work through noon on Tuesday or extend longer than that if necessary, depending on the demand.
Well, a lot of the planning also went around our community lifeline of food, water and shelter. Uh, this one, we kind of focused with our first responders kind of coming in for this event as opposed to others. So we identified resources to provide food for our public safety and support personnel. And uh, so we've done that with our local and they're able to provide that for the entire operational period for emergency management from Thursday all the way through uh, Tuesday if necessary. We have locations for staging water for di- uh, distribution, citizens and visitors. So you can imagine if I was uh, stuck on the interstate for four hours and stuck in an area for extended periods of time, maybe I prepared, but I probably didn't prepare as well as I should have. Um, that goes without saying. So we do have an ability to provide some water, some drinking water for that. Uh, shelter for additional first responders and stage assets. So we're having ours in place early. So we don't have movement on the day of the total eclipse. So we have an ability that if uh, we have one of our firefighters living out of town in shirts, then he can actually come in the night before and stay at a, a local uh, area which we have kind of designated for public safety. So they can spend the night and be ready for work at nine o'clock or at, at seven o'clock in the morning. And then of course, even identifying shelter for pets, although it's not something we need per se, but it is something you still need to have the conversation when you're looking at. Emergency management, you do as much as you can to plan ahead to mitigate those uh, potential disasters. Medical care, public health. So we looked at the health and medical. So we uh, identified opportunities to decompress the Peterson Regional Medical Center Emergency Department. So we're working directly with Peterson Health. Um, then ta- having talks with them. We're working with Franklin Clinic, working with Raphael Clinic, we're working with our medical director. So we're making sure we have a good understanding of the needs of the community on a regular basis, but also what is that potential need that we may, uh, that may see with the increased visitors? Will there be additional needs for those that we cannot manage at the emergency department? So how do we work? And we call that decompress. So how do we de- decompress the emergency department? By having those individuals that have minor injuries, don't need to go to the emergency department. They can go to urgent care, maybe even the Franklin Clinic or maybe. maybe even the Franklin Clinic, or maybe it's even minor, and the Raphael Clinic can also help out with that. We've identified potential public safety stations and staging areas, as chief mentioned. So we do have four additional ones of those staged on the outskirts of the city. That helps for public safety, helps for streets, it's a rehab area for us, and it also allows us to be able to respond out, and also in if necessary, but so that way we don't necessarily cross town. If you can imagine, the traffic might be a little heavier, so it keeps us in kind of a district. Additional EMS and acute care support, I mentioned that a second ago. And we're still working on some additional EMS support for the region, and we're working with our four counties, Gillespie, Bandera, and Kendall, in trying to get additional EMS resources that can help support all four counties. Because as you can imagine, our mutual aid is not going to be available, because they're going to be just as busy as we are. And they'll actually be expanding their capacity to respond. And then procure some additional medical supplies for the city, for EMS, for anyone out there operating. Energy, so that talks about identifying secured fuel resource for public safety, very important. And so we've already been, we've had communications with them, that was an early one. And so we have an additional fuel resources for us that we can get, that citizens don't have access to for public safety. But on that, we have educated our vendors to secure additional fuel for citizens and visitors, explaining the situation and potentially the increase of guests coming to town, and what that would look like, and then how they can possibly work to kind of mitigate that, or what is their schedule, and how can they adjust their schedule accordingly? So they're not waiting for their normal delivery at 1:30 on Monday, they probably need to have that conversation with their vendors. And then coordinate with emergency management response with K-Pub. So obviously talking with K-Pub, counties working with their partners out there, too, to make sure there's no unmet needs. And currently, there are none with K-Pub. So infrastructure, public safety communications, chief?
So as we worked through public safety communications, we've identified opportunities to help support cellular broadband and Wi-Fi, primarily for first responders, to ensure that our systems stay in play and stay up and running. We've also identified additional public safety communication resources through L-CRA, our radio supplier, and the network that they utilize. We'll be leveraging a lot of that L-CRA network in time that we envision that we will likely lose cellular services. So we have made plans to have additional communications equipment brought in, so that we can distribute that to our partners and folks that we know we're going to need to communicate with during the event. We're identifying locations and means for citizens and visitors to contact 911. We'll be continuously putting out information as we approach the eclipse in reference to knowing where landlines may be in your neighborhood, knowing what businesses may be nearby that you could get to, to utilize a landline to call 911 if necessary, as well as the fire stations will be set up as a public safety point that you can go to to get help, and will be staffed. We've expanded the L-CRA radio system to our streets department, and we'll also be leveraging that with our public works, Parks Department, and several others that will be involved in the response from the city side. We're also working in our 911 center to set up additional call takers, to answer primarily our administrative lines, non-emergency calls, to enable our 911 operators to concentrate on the emergency calls as they come into the center, and be able to dispatch those rapidly into the field for our response.
So the other ones is the public communications, and we're actively working on that. So we've identified a means to disseminate the emergency messaging. We have that in place with the city of Kerrville, as does Kerr County. Kerr County has what they call Code Red. So the city of Kerrville has what we call Rave on our communications, and so we're working to kind of continue to use that. We've also been approved through IPALS, the federal messaging, so we have access to that. So we got that done last month, and tried and worked through, and so we have that ability, too, for emergency messaging. So that's really important. Provide community education for planning and preparing. So that's going to be ramped up here in March, as we get closer to approaching the date. That's when people need information. So people want information in October, but I need it about a month before, and definitely when we get closer to a week before, about what that's going to look like, how is that going to impact my daily life, and what do I need to do to make those changes? So we're really working on that. Coordinate our PIO messaging between the city, county, Peterson Health, a consistent message. So we've been working on that with all four of those agencies to get that, including the police department, and provide community education for contacting public safety and 911. So we will have more messaging out there, so our citizens know, and our guests know how to get ahold of 911. If you don't have cellular service, two, where I need to go, what do I need to do? And I think that's really important information that we'll be putting out. And then press conferences, we'll be doing more of those as we get closer to the event. Transportation, chief?
We've been working with Tech dot for about the last year. We've been working internally, longer than that, working on a traffic plan post-event primarily, is what we've been focusing on. In fact, up until about three hours ago, we were in a room working over the plan that has been returned to us from Tech dot. We submitted that to them, we got that back from them about two weeks ago. So we've been working through, confirming what areas they will be handling as far as setting up traffic, traffic patterns, and what areas that we'll be responsible for. We'll be partnering with them, hopefully in our emergency operations center, they will have someone there that we can communicate with day of event to roll with the punches. The best laid plans are only good until the first emergency happens, and then you have to be prepared to shift. So that's part of our plan in trying to identify what those needs are going to be, and then have secondary plans to respond from there. We've been working both internally with the city of Kerrville Streets Department, as well as with Tech dot, to help identify resources to help us with some of the necessary road closures and traffic flow changes that will occur post-event. I think it's important to foot stomp, this is day of eclipse event, April 8th. While we expect traffic to increase, you know, the week leading up to, everything that we've seen in the previous studies, white papers, and after action reports indicate day of event, particularly post-event, is where you see the majority of the traffic snarls that we'll need to work through. We've, as I mentioned earlier, we've identified offside parking locations and transportation for our guests, and we're working to be able to provide real-time traffic flow information into the EOC to help us better make decisions in the field. And we're working with local radio stations and others to be able to put that information out if it becomes necessary for public to be notified in the moment, especially if we consider cellular service may be disrupted where many folks get a lot of their information. We've coordinated and identified potential issues with increased air traffic. At Kerrville Aviation Airport has a fantastic plan in place, and they're prepared for the increased air traffic there.
And last one, I think we have two more. So hazardous material, really look at additional location for our trash locations, something we've talked directly with the neighborhood, with the city, and trying to identify what that's going to look like post-event, right? So people come in, they enjoy our event, and sometimes they have a tendency to leave their trash. That goes with any event out there. So what can we do to mitigate that? So we're looking at our additional trash locations. We've been educating our trash pickup vendors for additional service runs, especially for some of our restaurants or other vendors that may have a higher volume than normally they've seen. So once again, waiting till Monday at noon is when they usually pick up, probably is not the time for that. So they're working on that. Identify resource for post-debris management, trash management. So we're working on that with the city, taking a look at a little bigger picture, what that's going to look like. Late Monday, early Tuesday, when the sun breaks, what that looks like, and what we need to do to take care of our city. And I think that that's really important. So this is our town, and we want to make sure that we do that. So people come in, and we want to make sure that they have access to that. So they will know where the trash locations are, whether they use them or not, I can't say for the other. But identify location resource for portable restroom facilities, another very important piece. So we have 200 portable restrooms, I believe, that will be positioned throughout the city at those key locations, so people have access to those. And once again, so we're making sure that those are in those possible viewing areas or sites where people may gather to view. Community planning, so this is kind of the big piece, what we talk about. When we really look at this, so our charge is to provide safety and security to our citizens and our guests, and we take that very seriously. That's why we've been doing so much planning for this total eclipse, because we've been looking at the 2017. We've been researching the data, we've been trying to look at all these that we can kind of mitigate ahead of time. Can't, I cannot fix 100% of those. Some of these plans are going to look great until actually it's go time, and then we're going to have to do some changes. But we've identified things, we look at things, and maybe I closed the gap a lot for that. So whether it be cellular, whether it be trash pickup for there. So we're trying to impact late Sunday, it says last Sunday. Late Sunday, we're focused on Monday with large number of guests. Basic needs, so this is on the Kerrville Eclipse website you can look at. So basic needs of food and water. So it's a one to two day event. If you don't want to get out, it's three days, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. That's what we're talking about. So there should be enough food for that, so there should definitely be enough food to go around, so we can do that, and plan ahead of time typically for that. If you go grocery shopping on Monday at 1 o'clock, probably need to change that. So make sure you have enough through Wednesday for there. Water, same thing. But this is any emergency, and we all learned this years ago, probably three years ago, when it wasn't 90 degrees out, it was probably closer to freezing, that we didn't have some of these basic needs that we really wish we had around the house. So what is some of those for the water? Fuel, fuel is one of those, that's a standard. Anyone, when they go back to their car, take a look at your gauge, what's the distance to empty? That's as far as you get in an emergency, that's it. So if it's 30 miles, it's 30 miles. So filling up early, not over, you don't need to fill up trash cans, as we've seen, but filling up your vehicle early. I mean, you have 300 miles, it's Kerrville. So if I fill up early, keep it topped off, that's best practices anyway of what we should do, and I'm just as guilty. So, but it is best practices of what we should do. So making sure we're doing that, so we don't put the strain on our fuel stations and our vendors here in town, and we can make sure our guests are fueled up, so they can head on their way out of town, so for that one. Medications, medications again. So it's two days, if you're close on your refill, you probably need to adjust that. So, and I know for most of that is pretty easy nowadays, and just making sure you get those adjustments, so you know where your medications are. If you are traveling as a guest, we will have that information. Make sure you bring your medications, because it could be a long day with heavy traffic trying to get back home, wherever that may be. And then cash, a lot of the cellular service, some of that works on the cellular. So having cash is always important, so it's something we don't carry as much today as we used to, but always making sure you have some amount of cash, be able to buy some of the basics if they're having issues, or it's very slow, and I just want a drink, or something like that, then you can be able to purchase that. Reschedule your routine appointments. If you have an appointment on Monday, reschedule it. Most places, probably physician's office, are closing, so there won't be an option. So you can't go to your chiropractor on Monday, will probably have to wait till Wednesday for that one. Limit travel on Monday, but enjoy the festival, enjoy our community. It's the same thing I'm telling my family, you can go out, you can do things, expect delays. It's if we were to go to San Antonio on Friday and say, I want to go downtown to the Alamo Dome at 5 o'clock, I'm probably going to expect delays. We're going to see those, we're going to get those delays. But you can still go out and enjoy this, and enjoy the festival if you want to. Just understand some of the emergency routes when we get to that, I'm sorry, some of the traffic routes when we start posting that. Just expect delays. Recommend our restaurants and mercantile businesses remain open. This is an opportunity to showcase for people coming in, so have that available, have our restaurants open for that, so people can come in. Maybe it's a smaller list of what you actually have to choose from, as opposed to 50 different things on the menu. We will provide local maps and a community planning guide, so we're going to have maps with some of the basic needs that'll be available, handout paper maps, because sometimes cellular won't have it, they will be able to download. But, so where's the charging stations? Where's the hospital? Because if I'm new to Kerrville, I don't know where that is. Where's the urgent care? How do I get fuel? Where's groceries? Some of those basic needs that we'll actually have on a handout map, with phone numbers also. Anticipate the cellular impact with large crowds, that happens now. If we're at the Fortis Drive down there, we can't always get out on our cell phone. If we go to a Spurs game, we can't get out on our cell phone. Same thing is going to happen, it will be expected. We're doing everything we can to mitigate it, but I can't stop it. So there will be times when everyone's live streaming, so for the four minutes and 26 seconds, yes, there will be problems where things will not work on cellular. So know your neighbor. It was neighbor helping neighbor years ago, and it is today. Know who has a landline, or they call it the Plano Telephone System. So know who has that. And that way, if I have an emergency, and my neighbor has a Plano Telephone System, a landline, I can go over there if I have an emergency, be able to use that. So Kerrville Fire Stations will be staffed with EMTs, with access to police, fire, and EMS response. So we will have a dedicated individual there, not assigned to a truck, that will be ready. So if you have an emergency, you know where your nearest fire station is, and you'll be able to go there. And then we will have an EMT there to be able to either call police, we'll be able to call back on our radios, be able to get those emergency services that you need. Public messaging with local radio stations, newspaper, and other outlets is another planning piece we'll be working on. You will see more of that coming up in March, as we get closer to the eclipse within about a month from next Friday. As always, the KerrvilleEclipse.com, our frequently asked questions is updated on there. So we are constantly, as we get more information, and we're ready to release information, we will put that on there, and it will update. I do anticipate on seeing information from the county on there, as well as Peterson Health. So they will also have some information be posted on there. And then we'll have our community information guide that they're also working on, that will have a little more in-depth of our festival and other activities that will be going on over the weekend. And stay informed, that's probably the biggest piece of what we have, is that we ask our citizens to stay informed. We're going to work on the different media outlets, so we get to everyone, to Mrs. Jones, as I always said. So she knows how to call 911, so she gets that, not just Facebook, whether it be your water bill that they're going to receive on there, whether it be your other media outlets, but we're going to do what we can to make sure we get that messaging out to everybody, so everyone is informed, so we have an enjoyable, safe, total eclipse that is coming like 40 days. Finally. So, and with that, what's next? So I'll turn a little bit to the city manager, but we're working with our city personnel and opportunity to support the operation, so.
Have a speaking gig in this?
All right, please, sir. No, thanks for this one. So yeah, Mayor Council, the other thing that we're looking at, we kind of talked about it this morning. We are not going to be open for the public for municipal court, developmental services, or City Hall on the day of the eclipse, so that Monday. We are going to have personnel available for answering phones or anything that comes up for that. We are going to be looking at making sure that, you know, staff that are coming in that day, we're planning ahead as far as working kind of a seven hour period. And that way, we can assign staff based off of where some of the needs are, to make sure that our community, you know, and everything is safe. Again, with the public information, keep looking at the facts, it's going to be constantly updated. We're going to continue to talk about it, you know, probably till we're blue in the face, to make sure that our residents and everybody are informed of what's going on. And as anything changes, we'll just, we'll continue to let council and the community know.
I have a question for chief. You touched just a little bit about how our surrounding counties are going to be, you know, law enforcement's going to be tied up. Their law enforcement is going to be tied up in their own counties. Are you looking at just utilizing our current staff? Or are you bringing in maybe some outside agencies from areas that are not in the path of totality?
Well, we're going to be asking for mutual aid from the agents, some of the agencies outside the path of totality. We don't know what that response is going to be yet, as I said, literally up to about two hours ago. We were running through the final pieces of the traffic plan, and part of what that was, was to help us identify some of the officer needs, law enforcement needs, that we were going to have related to that program. We know what we need at the eclipse event, and we know what we need on patrol. We have both of those fully staffed, really our traffic control areas where we will be needing assistance. That's not saying when we bring those folks in, that's where you'll see them. We may backfill them into the special event pieces, or partner them with some of our patrol officers to help fill those gaps, and then push our personnel into the.
But you are looking at that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Touch on that, too, Mayor and Council, you know, some of the things that the chiefs are looking at, and some of the local counties are looking at, some places are already issuing disaster declarations. Really want to talk about that, just because it's important on what the county decides to do, what we, you know, what we decide to do as a city. We have a draft kind of ready to go to determine if we're going to do it. I really hate to use the disaster declaration in this way, unfortunately, and I'm going to throw TDM under the bus on this one, is TDM is being reactive to things for cities that are planning, versus proactive and providing resources ahead of time, which is forcing cities and counties to have. which is forcing cities and counties to have to go into potential disaster declarations. So more to follow on that. We don't know the direction that is gonna go yet. But as some of the stuff starts getting fleshed out, we're, we'll continue to keep council updated and the community updated on this.
What's the main factor in deciding whether we will issue that declaration or not?
Bringing it to y'all and basically resources. So if there's, you know, funding or if things, you know, if, I mean, there could be a lot of factors, but if, if there, if there's a potential for like reimbursement or funds that come available from the state, you know, and kind of managing or mitigating, you know, I, I don't want to say the disaster, because it's not really a disaster.
Right.
It's, it's more of just the resources available. So like, for example, if we wanted to do what they call a star request now, they're gonna deny it because we don't have a disaster declaration. So in order to get the resources, we're kind of doing, I hate saying administrative disaster declaration, but in a way, that's, it's kind of being, yeah, the, our county's hands and city's hands are being forced unfortunately in this. So more to follow on kind of what that looks like, and any guidance that council wants to kind of give us on that, give us some direction.
Anything else, Council?
No.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Very much.
I think you, we could very simply, simply say, we need the three Ps. We need a plan, we need patience, and we need to put our best foot forward for our neighbors and everybody that's gonna be in town. So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And good luck. We are ready, I believe now, for some pavement and street assessment.
Okay. I'll try to condense it a little bit. I know y'all running on the meeting, but I do want to introduce a few people. Wait for the door to... Guess we'll leave it open. Thank you. So, so we're here today to talk about our street management update that we've just done. I want to introduce the people that have been working on it. It was Kyle Burrow, also the doorman. Jess Wayne, who is our consulting engineer, you know, on success engineering. And then David Barrera. David's in charge of operations. So between the three of them, they're, they're really where the, where the rubber hits the road, if you will, on this plan and how we administer and how we operate it. So thank you guys for all the work that you've done. Success Engineering has been doing engineering services for us for a number of different years. This will be, we actually changed the, the system that we use for the pavement management system, or the pavement management inspection portion of it. Right now, we're using the roadway assessment management team. So Success hired them to go out and drive all of our streets again and find out what is the condition of the street, similar to what we've done in the past. But it is a different contractor this year. So they actually drove 321 lane miles. Of those 321 lane miles, we've, we've actually touched 293 lane miles. So we actually have touched a lot of streets. Don't mean we've rebuilt all of them, though there's been some kind of meth, some kind of repair method done on that, on 293 miles of streets. So. So what does that look like? How, where did we start? We started way back in 2016 with Fugro. They were the first automated one. That van that we, that I showed you on that first screen, Fugro had a van very similar to that back in 2016. They've evolved a little bit, and we've gotten away from Fugro. We didn't, some of their analysis was a little bit hard for us to manipulate the way that we needed to. And so we, we went with, with Success, and they've, you'll see on 2020, 2020, we went with Fugro again. Then on 2023, this is when we hired Success and that evaluation system. So it's been a little while, we, we actually rode and drove all the streets in, in February of '23, and now here we are here in February '24, giving this presentation. And we've kind of retooled a little bit during that period of time. And so we're actually getting to see a little bit of a new, new product there. And then obviously, we'll start our maintenance on the spring in 2022, like we do every year, a regular routine maintenance for the, for the streets. So what did we consider? I would think this is probably the most important component of our street management is, if we had to pick one mission statement, what would it be? It's this first line up here. Now, the goal of our payment management is apply the right treatment to the right pavement at the right time. And what does that, what does that really boil down to? I mean, I, I'll take you a little bit out of order there. And so what's the right pavement? That's what that van was out looking for. What pavement is in the worst condition? How is it being aged? How is it getting weathered? What do we need to do to it? So that's the second part. What is the treatment type? What are we gonna do to it? The city actually uses four different methods of treatment. We do crack seal, slurry seal, mill, milling overlay, and then full depth reconstruction. So that's our treatment that we would apply, apply to it. And then that last piece is what's the right time? And usually, that has a lot to do with cost, and then lifespan of the, of the asphalt itself. And so to, I'm not gonna bore you with reading through all the, all the bullet points there, but that's what we're looking for in a nutshell. So. So we've already talked a little bit about slurry seal. So how does that, kind of, if we had to use it in a graphical format, how does that line up? What are we looking at here? So that red line is kind of the lifespan of the street. Starts up there on the top left-hand side with a good street. And, and it kind of, you know, goes out in little ways, and it starts deteriorating. And you can kind of see it kind of, it's going fairly level, and then it kind of falls off, and then it levels out again. We're trying to keep that upper curve. We, we're trying to get to it before it falls off too far, and it gets all the way down to that reconstruction. So our annual maintenance budget up there is, is funding three different types of, of methods. One is a crack seal, the, is the, the very good over there, nothing, something has just happened to it. That street's in really good condition, nothing needs to happen to it. The first piece of treatment that we would do to the street is a crack seal. That's the little squiggly lines that you see everywhere, and that's to prevent the water from getting into the street. The next is a slurry seal. That's actually applying a, a waterproof barrier over the whole street, and then putting some aggregate in there as well to keep the tires up off of that, off that waterproof barrier. The third one is the milling overlay. We actually go in and mill out some of the old asphalt and put in new asphalt in its place. So that's, those, all of that is as the street deteriorates, we gotta spend a little bit more time, a little bit more money to make that happen. And then the final one over there on the far right-hand side, and it was the long-term, is the full depth reconstruction. And any number of things could happen there, where you're having a base failure or something of that nature. There's rutting in the road, there's a spring under the street, and you gotta dig all that out, the subgrade out, and go back in with new material. Yeah, or you've just let it go too long, and it's all, you know, the, the whole thing is, is, is starting to fail. So. I mean, if you grow plan, you'll see, if you look back at that 2016, some of those things that we just talked about, what did they first assess for us? The main, the big ones were potholes, you know, asphalt bleeding, surface raveling, edge cracking, alligator cracking, block cracking, pumping, raveling. I mean, there's all kinds of terms that we use for, to describe pavement. But we're really trying to find out where, what condition is the street in in Curval? Our overall street system, you know, give me a number, if we had to rate it on a scale from 100, from 0 to 100, where do, where do we fall? You'll see at the bottom of that slide, we, we came in at a 59.7. It's a pretty low number. This is again on a scale from 1 to 100. So we, we moved forward, and we did, we did some work. In 2019, we, we improved that number to 69. And so we did some more work, went back to, got some funding in place, actually did a bond. And now in 2023, our, our improvement is a 79. So we have brought that from a 59 to 69 to a 79. And a lot of that, a lot of that work is, is because of funding, because of a good team, and a good product that we're putting out. So we're actually being able to, to manage that. And finance has been a big part of that for us as well. So what is the, the maintenance objective for our plan? The key objective to reassess the street condition, this is what we did with the Fugro, or excuse me, the, the RAS bus. When they come in and shoot it, what, has anything changed in the last three years since we have it? How fast is the asphalt deteriorating? Is it lasting longer than we anticipated? Is it degrading faster than we anticipated? Are the cracks in the street that we sealed, are they opening back up again? We, we just take a full valuation, and then we can take all of that data and reassess what, what the method is that we need to present for the streets. Also look at the, the segments of streets. Now, I'll tell you, surprising to me, out of all of this studying that they do, it's hard to believe that the, probably the segments is the hardest piece to, to stitch together. So if you can imagine every street being a block, and we look at them individually blocks. And at some point, you gotta say, okay, this intersection belongs to this street, and that intersection belongs to the next street. And how do you stitch all those together, where you're not double counting the intersections? And then also getting enough section, long enough section for your contractor come in and actually mobilize onto one site and produce enough, you know, a, a good product over a section of street. And so they've actually been able to cycle, to tie those together. Been a little bit difficult. I'd say that's probably the biggest part of, of the, because you'll have one section, one block that's a 30, and the next is a 60, and then it's an 80. And so they're all, as we, we gotta average all that in to, to make that work. And we come up with that average, or the annual cycle, the street method that we use for, for repairing. And then we reevaluate the budget, the budget, the technique that we just talked about and the prioritization of the streets. In a nutshell, we, we boil it down to three components that we're really interested in when we look at our streets. What are the, the pavement condition? If you look at the pavement itself, what does it rank? The ride coefficient. You know, what's, what's important on a street? How does it ride? I mean, right, no, nobody really cares about anything else. Some people do care about the color, I think almost more than the ride coefficient. But for me, I care about the ride coefficient more than anything. Because you pick up on all those utility cuts, and you pick up on uneven pavement. I mean, it's just a comfort thing. And the last one there is the roadway satisfaction. How big of it? What's the classification? We don't want to, we don't want to fix a street that's gonna cost us a half a million dollars, it's for two homes. We will fix it, but it may be a lesser repair method than a full depth. And so we, we weigh all that out to get the biggest bang for the buck that we're gonna spend on them. As we pull that together, we look then next at the vehicle, your vehicle usage of what we just talked about, arterial versus residential. Utility conflicts, are we gonna have utilities dig up our streets in the next year or two? We give notice to all of our street, people that have utilities in the street and say, hey, we're coming through here, we're gonna pave this street, please move your utilities, do what you're gonna do, so you're not cutting our streets. And then conflicts with private development, are we having any development in that area? So as we pull all of that together, then we make this plan for what we are going to pave next year, and how that looks, and, you know, we're, try to be proactive in, in, in seeing problems come up. So. Our annual budget right now, thank you for it, is 2.13 or 5.5 million dollars. Out of that budget, we fund the crack seal, the slurry seal, milling overlay, striping, engineering, drainage maintenance, and intersection maintenance. You don't really see a full depth on there. We don't typically do full depth. If there's any money left over at the end of the year, we take that. And once we have enough money for a whole street, then we'll spend it, then we'll hire, hire a contractor come in and do the full depth. Most of those are very expensive. And so we, we don't budget for that annually. We kind of keep, pull some money aside and when, because we know some streets are gonna get to that level. And then when it does get there, Westminster being a prime example, the most recent one, then, then we, then we bite that piece off and go on to the next one. So it's not a budgeted item. But how does our budget look over the last few years, about 10-year window that we're looking at here to see how, how council's funded the street program? We started there at about $770,000, and it's been growing ever since. Now, you can see in 20, was it 2022, our current budget started at, it's $2,155,000, I think, $155,500? Is that right, David? Sound right? Okay. Anyway, that's been holding steady since 2022, 23, 24. But if you look at 2022, we sold a bond in there. I mean, that really was the, the secret to success for going from a condition index of 69 to 79. That we really were able to catch up. And so we looked at this, this, well, there's a slide in here between, between this one and the one I was thinking of. This kind of shows you in a graphical format what our streets currently look like in a, in a, on a scale of 1 to 100. It's a little different than the pavement index score. It's just by the quality of the street itself. So. Now, you'll see that the, that the, a big portion of them are in the dark green, and then the lime green. And as you get out in the years, the dark greens get smaller and smaller, because that street's starting to get older and older. But like a car, you know, it starts, things start to happen to it, weeds start growing in it. You know, you have an accident on it, gets diesel spilled on it, he does a utility cut, it falls down to that good instead of very good. And as the years go by, it just keeps, it just keeps going. So we have to keep this maintenance process going. So I asked the consultant, I said, man, we, we're not proposing this, we're not proposing a bond, but just for an interesting slide for us to talk through on, on the council day, on the council presentation. Now, we'd looked at what would it cost if the council wanted to do another bond? Again, not asking for that. I, I don't think, I don't think we need that, but just a, just an interesting number. That one on the right-hand side over there gives you how much it would cost if we were trying to get our, our streets up to as close to 100 as we can. We never really get there, because they're always degrading. But that's a $17 million fix. And what we would do if we had that money is we would do that, that circle on the left-hand side. There again, not proposing that, just thought it would be just a good, good number to have in front of y'all, so y'all know, you know, these are really big numbers that we're dealing with. And we're really satisfied with where we've come from in the past. And what we want to do is this graph here, this, this line graph, we want to keep it in that 70 to 80 range. We don't want to go up there to 100, because that would be like buying a new car every six months or every year. We want to keep it in something that's taught, you know, in a tolerable range, where we have a good asset. And then we just keep managing it for a long term, or working it out. So you'll see there in 2023, we actually came, or in '19, we were at about that 68, 69%. In 2023, we've come up to almost 80. And so we projected, what would we do when we're moving forward? If we just wanted to stay, if we wanted to stay exactly where we are today? It's a, it's a pretty nice car that we're in right now. It's almost an 80. If you see the steady state up there, that's $4 million a year we would have to put into the system every year to kind of keep it where we are now. The anticipated budget there is the blue line. That's, we're not, we're, council's decision as to how y'all want to move forward. But that kind of shows us over the next four years, five years, if we wanted to end at a 70, what would we have to do annually to kind of keep it in that 70 range for the next five years? And then our current budget is at 2.15 million. That keeps us in the, in the 70 range for another three years, which is pretty good too, you know. And so I don't, it's up to council as to how we move forward. Right now, we're at that 2.13. We're not asking for more money. It's just a, just a litmus test for y'all to kind of gauge where we're at and what we're anticipating. So I want to bring that to you. Again, we're not asking for a big bond, because it, it, we, we, we think, if, ideally, we would be in that 70, 80 range, would be, would be good. Roughly in that range. Okay. So what are the next steps? We did this presentation for you today, just kind of get you up to, up to speed. We're really not asking for you to adopt any, any plan or anything like that. We just want to tell you what we've been doing, make sure you're still on board, sounds like a good product that we're getting. Or if there's any additional information you may, you may want to, want to consider or want us to get for you, then we'd be happy to do that. If not, then we're gonna, we would like to award the crack seal and slurry seal streets. We would have used Success Engineering again. We'd bring that to you hopefully in the first meeting in March. I have on the second meeting, but Jess thinks he can get it done in time, right, Jess? There you go. See, a little peer pressure is perfectly what we wanted tonight. So, yeah. But we'll have him give us a scope and fee, if indeed this is the process that we want to follow here. So. Now, the street, the street department will start immediately working on the crack seal and slurry seal streets. They don't physically work on the streets, but we do the drainage for them, and we also do trim trees. We get signage and stuff ready. Our contractor does most of that work. But there is a, there's a level, there's a level of effort there that our street department does. And then they'll start the rehabilitation later on this spring, once it warms up in the evening. So. Those are our next steps. And with that, this is a picture of our street department working out there. I'm not sure what intersection this is. It looks like it's over there on Hays to me, but I'm not positive. So. With that, I will answer any questions you might have.
As far as that index number goes, that 79.6 or whatever it is, is there a standard that we absolutely cannot go below?
I'll say jokingly, have you ever been to San Antonio? No, there's no, there's no low.
Okay, so we don't get fined for having poor streets, but, but, you know, for safety and health and, and quality of life, we want to have that index number somewhere between 70 and 80.
Ideally, yes. So since that first, and that was something that we, we had to kind of kick around when we started, the, the first plan is where do we, what, what's a good number? What's a good target number? And that council targeted 70, because we were at a 59. We knew it was going to cost a lot of money to get it up to a 70. But it, but back then, they said, let's, let's bring us a plan that gets us there. And so that's what we did. We got them a plan that, that got us there. And then we did look at those, at a bond too. The, the money was, was great at that time. I mean, we had a, we got a great deal on the bond. So they decided, let's go ahead and do that. So they decided, let's go ahead and do that, kinda get us where we need to be and that'll, that'll set us up for the next few years to where we can manage it within our operational budget. But yes, between seventy and eighty is a, is a good, is a, is a good spot to be.
So if you had two point five million, just on a regular basis, you knew that would be coming in every year for a budget, would, would that keep you? My understanding, that would keep you in pretty good shape?
Yes, yes. So if, if we had the, the two point five million, right now, we don't, I'll, I'll be completely honest with you, we usually have a little bit of money left over at the, the end of the year anyway. But what we use that for is that full-depth reconstruction. So what we're, right now, what we're not doing is planning for that as much. And so we're using the money, the funds that we have for the most part. Let's hope you have a little bit of money left over. But there does get to be a place where you have, where the street department, either we gotta grow the street department or we, or they just can't get it all done because of the, the volume of money and the work as, as it's related. So right now, we're in a pretty good spot financially, workload versus how much money we have. But if we, if we did that, what we would do is we could contract some more work out and we could, we could get that number, get the reef, the full-depth reconstruction number up and do another street and that would increase our, our, our PCI.
Okay. This full report on our website already?
This PowerPoint presentation or the report?
Just their report.
Uh, no, not yet. We just finished it, I think we got it this week. And so, yeah, we could, about a hundred and eighty pages. So, yeah, we can put it up there. It's about a hundred and eighty pages, wasn't it, Jess? Hundred and eighty-six, if you wanna be precise, so. But yes, it's a very good report. It, it's worth the read and there's a lot of information there.
Good stuff. Thank you.
This, this is good information. Very good. And, uh, any other questions, counsel?
Yes. Stuart, I saw February, February, February. Last one's February twenty-three. We're gonna have one, a report done this year as well for twenty-four?
No, so we did, we did it in twenty-three. We try to do that every three to five years, especially early on, because what we, what we wanted to do is, the first one just was kind of a, it was just a benchmark. We didn't know how fast it was degrading. We didn't know, we didn't know, we, we knew we needed a baseline. And so as we had developed that baseline, we wanted to come back in three years, five years and see, okay, now are our projections right? Is the amount of work that we're doing right? Are the streets that we think that we're gonna deteriorate, are they deteriorating on the same schedule we thought they were gonna deteriorate? So the more often we did it, the better, the more we feel comfortable with it. So we've, we've, we're originally scheduled for every three years and now I'm thinking we can do every three years, or we may be able to push it out to every five years. We're really trying to, to tune that data in with the software that we're using to manage it. And once we get comfortable with that level, I think we'll be able to push out to five years. But we've changed software at a couple of different times, more for historical benefit and kinda projections. The software hadn't quite caught up with the technology on the, on, with the, the machine that we're using. So we started with an Excel format and now we're using Brightly?
Brightly, yeah.
And so there, so there's some evolving there. And every time you evolve into something different, you kinda gotta check yourself and say, hey, you know, let's look back at the baseline, make sure we're following progressively. So every three to five years, we plan on doing it.
Okay. Can I go anything else? Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. A lot of time and energy and effort has gone into this, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, we come to, we are at about three, five thirty-five and we have one item left. Are you ready to proceed?
It's been.
All right. Regulations for peddlers, solicitors, and canvassers. And we have had, we have the original and I believe we've had another revision. And Mike, what do you have for us right now?
Nothing really. Mr. Garcia made a presentation to you last meeting. I answered some questions. In the interim, you've got a new draft with some polishing, I would say, and then I'm, I'm here prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Why don't we, counsel, just, we'll go by individuals. If you have something that you want to bring up, and I don't think we need to go through this line by line, and so let's just take your concerns as they come. Brenda, do you have some that you would like to share?
Oh, no, I just wanna clarify whether or not canvassers, wheth- whether we just have a definition of what a canvasser is and how canvassers fall into this peddler's ordinance or whether they are exempt from this ordinance.
Right. There is a definition of canvassers within this ordinance. In fact, there was a definition of canvassers in our previous ordinance, and I think that's what led me to, one of the issues that led me to suggest a complete rewrite. Canvassers are subject to this ordinance, but partially. And I say partially because they don't have to pull a permit, they don't have to pay a fee. They would be subject to, I think, two big provisions. One, as the ordinance provides now, an eight PM to eight AM.
Right.
Kind of dead time where they couldn't approach a, a property. And then they could not approach a property if there's a no solicitation sign posted on the property.
Okay.
Or words to that effect.
But we're not taking away their religious or free speech.
That's in the eye of the beholder, right? I mean, this is a balance. Canvassers certainly possess a higher First Amendment standard than a peddler who is, you know, in a, in a business trying to make money. But again, for, for purposes of this ordinance, I think it's a reasonable regulation that they would not be able to, you know, that they couldn't approach a house at eight PM to eight AM in the morning and, and things like that.
But this ordinance primarily is directed towards the people who come to your house when you have roof problems or hail damage or wanna sell you security systems at eight or nine o'clock at night, correct?
Right. The, the big one that I hear lately is solar.
Yes. Yes. Okay. That was the only clarification I needed.
It's been implied that some of us who are running for office encourage this to come to counsel. I know that I didn't.
I didn't.
I'm sure Mr. Garcia also didn't. So that argument's dead on arrival. Everyone I've talked to about this ordinance has praised the concept of being left alone between eight PM and eight AM. Also, I, I noticed that y'all did some research and found that communities around our, around Curville also have a time period when it's, it's prohibited to go door-to-door, either as a peddler or as a canvasser. So I find it to be, I find it to be reasonable. I do agree with some of the changes that the mayor and Mr. Harris wanted to discuss, and I'm glad that we're doing that. But to imply that some of us are trying to seek political advantage with an ordinance we didn't, we're responding to like everyone else is ludicrous.
Let, let me, let me just say, two, two quick comments that when I was preparing this ordinance and preparing some background information for council, I found a twenty-ten memo that I sent to council about the existing ordinance that we have on the books now and why I thought it needed to be rewritten. And for whatever reason, it's come up a couple of times in, in, you know, at a retreat or, or whatever, and council, it hasn't been a high, a high priority item. The other thing is too, is I, I did give you all some research. Kind of what I try to do is do benchmark cities and I've got roughly about twenty of those. And I, so I just picked, I think, twelve or fourteen of those and we did some research on those. Some of those cities don't regulate canvassers at all, okay? So out of the thirteen, I think four do regulate. Well, let me put it this way, out of the thirteen, four absolutely do what this ordinance will do is they lock down a time period that peddlers, solicitors, canvassers, whatever they term those activities, they can approach a, a private residence, so.
Everyone I've talked to has been very supportive of the idea of being left alone between eight PM and eight AM.
I'd even make it a couple hours later in the morning for, for, because there's a lot of people who sleep in, so. Jeff?
Yes, ma'am. One of the main reasons that I wanted to table this and get a little clarification is because I was elected by the citizens of Curville. I don't represent city council up here. I don't represent anybody, well, I represent everybody out here, or for the majority of. But I wanted to personally take a poll of some citizens in Curville. First off, I took, I did not take Mr. Rice's advice and go knock on doors. But, um, I was at HEB and I was just, hey, my name is Jeff Harrison, I'm one of your council members. What do you think about this? I probably talked to sixty people and I did not have a single person said, oh, God, come to my door and knock on it. I wanna, I wanna have it. Everybody said, I don't like it. I hate it. Yes, I have the option not to answer the door. I have a ring doorbell. I'm a millennial, sorry, and I wasn't looking at you directly, but.
Gen Z.
I wasn't judgment. They said, yeah, we can hide, we don't have to answer it, but if I'm doing something or if I'm feeding my baby, I don't wanna be interrupted. So that's what I wanted to go out and kinda ask. I did ask one lady, young lady, and she said, my parents looked up through their skylight the other day and there was a guy on their roof, a ladder in their driveway and he was on their roof. They went outside and said, what are you doing? Chief, this would have been perfect for you guys. Well, it looks like you have hail damage. I was up here to see if you had some. Seriously? I can't make that up. So it's, you know, not only now are you trespassing, but if they fell off that roof, then that homeowner's liable, you know, for something they didn't even ask for. So that's, that's one of the reasons that I said, let's table this, let's have a workshop on it, let's work on it, because I wanted to get citizens' input that we represent. And the input I got said, you step on my property, I'm gonna tell you to leave, or you have no expectation of First Amendment rights on my property, get off. So I wanted to do that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Roman, any, do you have anything?
I have specific things. I thought it would be easier to probably go through the ordinance from start to finish. That was easy.
Why don't, if you would just be comfortable and bring your particular ones and not go through it line by line?
Okay. Well, my particular ones aren't essentially gonna do just that, so I guess I'll do that from my end.
Well, I don't.
Well, I'm, I'm just gonna share my concerns and I'm gonna start from the beginning of the ordinance.
But I'm not sure we have time, Roman. We have fifteen minutes here to, and to go through line by line.
It's not line by line.
All right.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see anybody else being restricted, so I'd like to be able to share my thoughts too. I, as well, spoke with a lot of citizens in the interim when we tabled it and I'm glad council decided to do so.
Let's, let's keep to your things.
Hold on, not everybody else on council ought to do that.
Just, please, if you, let's move through this as quickly as you can.
Okay.
So we can finish. Thank you.
Just let me get through my comments, please. And so, just like what everybody else iterated, I'd like to do the same thing and share that the sentiment from an overwhelming majority of the people I spoke with said that this is ridiculous and that if they don't want someone on their property, they can use the trespassing law to stop them and call the police, or they just don't answer the door. So as we'll go through this, second whereas clause in here, I'm sorry, the third whereas clause on the first page of the ordinance uses the words petty annoyances. I don't think that properly reflects the issue that's going on here. Additionally, the chapter and article that is put under that, chapter is businesses, permits, and licenses. A canvasser is not a business and neither do they need to obtain a permit or a license. So I don't know why we're putting it under that chapter. I think it, it was best left alone in its own separate chapter. The article titles this solicit, uh, solicitations, yet canvassers, according to the own definition in the ordinance, are separate class of individuals and are not solicitors, so why are canvassers in the solicitations ordinance? The purpose of it on the first page of the exhibit says that it's to protect against criminal activity, including fraud and burglary, and that's a quote. As staff stated at our last meeting, the city has no evidence that we have crime that's related directly, of fraud, crime of fraud or burglary, directly related to the activity of canvassers, solicitors, or peddlers. So if we don't have the evidence of it and yet the purpose says that that's what we're doing, it seems like it's actually an inadvertent way of putting that, so we should probably strike that. I don't think that's the actual purpose of it and the true intent. Under definitions, there's the definition of an official and it's known as, it means the city manager, the city's peace officers, or code enforcement officers. When you go down to section thirty point one nine seven, which is the section of to revoke a permit, it says that any official can revoke a permit. So my question is, where's the oversight? And that if any official can revoke the permit under that definition, I think there should be an individual such as a city manager or his designee, like we have in most ordinances, rather than leaving it too open to almost anybody, because there could be disagreement among those individuals of whether it should be revoked or not. Section thirty dash one seven nine, which is the hours of canvassing, I appreciate that being cleared up because the research that we were given did not truly encompass of the whether canvassers were included in that. Over a majority of those cities either had no regulations on canvassers or had a definition from canvassers but didn't exactly regulate them. And so this one, I would actually suggest extending the time instead of eight AM to eight PM to eight AM to nine PM. And you look at what time sunset actually is during summer months as well, it's closer to nine, way closer to nine, sometimes even afterwards. It also says under that, under the hours of canvassing, that, that's prohibited unless permission is otherwise posted by the property, private property owner, and that's a quote. So my question is, what exactly, what type of permission would an individual be looking for to be posted on private properties, residents? Under section thirty point one eighty is the entry upon a premise is unlawful. So this says that if you have a no solicitor sign, it was now changed from peddlers to a no trespassing sign prohibits canvassers, peddlers, and solicitors. Now, it makes sense if someone has a trespassing sign for anybody to go on their property, but to put a no solicitor sign and a no trespassing sign on the same level as each other, I don't think is fair because solicitors are obviously different from canvassers. And if a person doesn't want solicitation for the selling of goods or services, but they want people to come and talk to them about their religious beliefs or political beliefs, I think that should be permitted. And obviously, it's defined differently, so that should definitely be amended. Going on to the do not knock list, I'm wondering whether this list, or I'm wondering why the list would actually automatically apply to all canvassers, solicitors, and peddlers. Because when you look at it, how does one get put on the list? I'm wondering if a neighbor can put one of their neighbors on the list, or does it have to be that property owner puts himself on the list? So is there somehow a way that somebody else can put someone else on a list when they don't want to be on the list? The list is provided to those who get a permit, so that's for solicitors and peddlers. Canvassers do not have to get a permit, so if they don't have to get that, then they don't get the list. So the question is, how are they expected to comply with the do not knock list? And the, and the other thing is, what information is going to be on that list? That's provided to those individuals. Because there's a safety mechanism that I spoke about last time, that you may be putting individuals who are in a more vulnerable state because they either are an older individual, they're less mobile, and now you're publicizing their name and their address for someone who has criminal intent to get that list and target those individuals. The permitting requirements and exemptions under section thirty point one eighty-four, changes were made to that list, but my pending question from last time is whether a person or a kid who's going door-to-door offering to mow someone's lawn, that's clearly, in my understanding, you have to get a permit for that. And if it's a minor, you go on. And if it's a minor, you go on, that minor has to get a supervisor or a sponsoring adult or a company or institution to sponsor them to get that permit to go ask their neighbor if they can mow their lawn. And, yeah. Right, but it doesn't have anything about a temporary sale sponsored by. So he's, he's bringing up that, he thinks that that would be exempt under number five, the one that was added about a temporary sale sponsored by a charitable nonprofit organization, including Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, service clubs and school organizations. Unfortunately, the average kid who's going around asking people to mow their lawns is not a nonprofit, not sponsored by a charitable organization. It's not part of Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Service Club or a school organization. Solicitation on public property, I have a question. There's a, on, part of it, it says that it's prohibited on streets and street right of ways. So I'm wondering if a sidewalk is considered a right of way? And if so, would that then prohibit people from participating? And it says, you know, the, this prohibition shall apply to any institution or group organized for a political, religious or charitable purpose or organizations engaged in such activities on behalf of an institution or group. So curious to get clarification on that. I already talked about the minor, the individual that's under an eighteen, and then two more. Investigation by the police department, I think it's, oh, I think we're stretching there by requiring fingerprints and a background check for someone who wants to get a permit. My question is, how long does that take to get processed? And for someone who wants to go out and canvas, or not canvas because they're exempt from the permit, who wants to go solicit, how long does that take for them to get all that information back so that they know they can do it or not? The denial, it says that a city, someone from the city can deny it. I think that needs to be specified who from the city can and not just leave it open. That's on section thirty dash one ninety-six. And the last one, section thirty dash one ninety-eight, appeals. The appeal goes back to the city manager, even though I think under the definitions, my understanding, the city manager is part of the individuals who can either revoke the permit and grant the permit. So like I said last time, I don't think the decision could go, should go back to the same individual as we do with most of our ordinances. It should go to city council. A perfect example is our short-term rental permit ordinance that we recently adopted not too long ago. So mayor, that's what I have right there. I would.
Thank you.
Highly appreciate some clarification on those changes.
I too have talked with a lot of people. I have had, it has been received favorably. The only thing that I have had a number of people and I myself would like to have eliminated is the do not lock, do not knock list. I just think, I, I don't think that's necessary. And I think it puts a lot of undue responsibility on the city that we don't need. And, and as we looked at the research, everybody else has done away with it or they don't do it. So that's, that's my only one that I would like to see eliminated.
Is that mayor's comment, is that consensus of counsel? Okay.
Anybody else care? Could leave it or could take it. Good point, good point. Okay, all right. So there's two there, I think, that, that have to do with that. The one, the application for that and, and the, the doing of it. Now, just forget that. You guys have enough to do without.
We know it doesn't work anyway. National, you call, don't call it list, it doesn't work.
It doesn't, that's right. So, all right. With all of Romans, how do you feel, counsel? Feel they, they're necessary? Would you like to see them? Consensus here?
I want to be kind, but I don't believe his views represent the majority of the council.
Brenda?
Agree.
Jeff? I agree also. So Mike, does that give you some guidance?
Yes, thank you.
All right. At this time, it is time to close the workshop, which we will do at five fifty-five. Thank you all.
See you in a minute.